It's not time yet.
I'm going to call to order the St. John Plan Commission Study Session for January 18th. Sergio, please roll call.
Bob Brosen.
Here.
Yolanda Cardona.
Here.
John Gill is not here today. Joe Gomez-Tago.
Here.
Bob Belois.
Here.
Jenna Lordson.
Here.
John Kennedy.
Here.
Attorney Adam Decker.
Here.
Engineer John Dykstra.
Here.
Councilman liaison Brian Blazak.
Present.
And town manager Joe Wizewati is not here today.
All right, we have item number three, old and new business. Item number A, we have the proposed final plat for Parish Woods, which is a 27 single-family residential lot. And I do see Mr. Fleming in the audience tonight. Good evening, sir. So is there any questions or comments from Mr. Fleming at this time?
Just wanted to give a brief update if I might.
Absolutely, sir.
As of this, as of today, I believe the water agreement that was discussed at the last meeting and made conditional for the, for moving forward is all but finalized. I signed, inked it today and sent it over to the town. So I think that would be something that would be held over until the secondary plat is approved. But nonetheless, the paperwork is done. With regards to the surety for the letter of credit for the value, we have a confirmation of value from Ken Kraus related to the, to the lift station. He wanted to see if we could wait a little longer to see if the dollar amount would be lower than what was, what was notated at the end of December. We said, just to make sure that we get it done and we're ready to go, keep the higher value. We don't necessarily need to bring it down to 52 or 42 or whatever it is. At that point in time, it's nominal. We just want to make sure that there's surety in place so that everyone is comfortable with that situation, so that we can keep this project moving forward to get that secondary plat approved and move forward to being recorded. With regards to the lift station, my update today was that basically everything but some of the electric is done. So we are nearly entirely fully installed and improved. The only thing related to the electric that is still waiting to get decided is the backup generator. Backup generators have been still plagued by COVID delays. When we ordered this, it was 14 months out. So we have been given a delivery date of mid to late February. Once it's there, it's plug and chug, they put it in and we're set. And so that was the update I was given from both Austin Equipment and Austin Electric, who are the two contractors completing the work for us. We would still plan to come before you at the February meeting and ask for a favorable vote for the secondary plat approval conditioned on the surety being in place, conditioned on those items that were discussed at the last meeting that I've updated you on. And that would allow us to be able to get the plats moving forward, get them recorded, get tile work ordered and get the builders that have committed to, I think, last time I misquoted and said 18, but it's 17 lots. I apologize for that. But still, 17 lots are committed to and we want to get those closed so builders can get, get moving on those lots. We've added a fair number of calls actually ever since people could start driving on the pavement out there, which is a great sign, given the uncertainty that's been in the housing market of the last 12 months with interest rates going up. So we're optimistic about the project moving forward. We're optimistic that we can get the secondary plat approved in February and keep this moving forward. Do you have any questions for me?
Just for the board, we had a couple of items that Jenna sent us. So we had Ken Kraus's, as Mr. Fleming noted, his either a letter of credit of 10% or the 30% certi bond, whatever. It's usually up to the petitioner's preference on what they'll be submitting to us. So he'll, he'll turn that in prior to the February 1st. So we have clarification that gets turned in. And then the second item he talked about during our discussion with the B boxes was discussion of location of those six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 approximately. And we wanted review, legal review. So Adam has been working on it. Any comments regarding this document you put together?
Well, I, I reviewed the original draft. I made several substantial changes which were agreed to by Mr. Fleming's attorney, John Schmaltz. So the document that's presented in your packet tonight is the final draft that I've reviewed and approved.
If there's any questions, comments, concerns regarding the letter. All right, and then he'll provide us a secondary letter of credit for the B boxes as well, correct? That is separate than Ken Kraus's.
That's in Ken Kraus's number.
Oh, that is in Ken Kraus's.
Yeah, so under the line item for water, that $20,000 and change.
Got it, I see it now. Okay, thank you.
So that will, it'll, it'll all be rolled up into one letter of credit.
Gotcha, okay.
So going back to the lift station, it's up and running or is it still with the generator, with electrical hooked up to?
It is not running yet, but...
The pumps are not running yet?
Correct. Although no services are there. And as I alluded to in the last meeting, it's going to be easily 30 days before I can even close on these lots, let alone a builder come to draw a permit, let alone start having services go to the lift station. One question I do have, and it might be a Sergio question, if I might direct that to him. The signs were put up and it was, I noticed that the, it's all, all, excuse me, Atherton. The road in entirety is called Atherton. But some comments that came back and we adjusted the secondary plat to reflect those portions of the road that go directly east-west.
12th Street and 12th Place, correct?
Understood, but the, the street signs that were provided by the town reflect Atherton and not those.
Oh, I see.
So I, I guess the question is, is do we, are the street signs changed or do we proceed with Atherton as the through?
No, Public Safety requires us recommending that it use 12th Street and 12th Place. And so the street, those street signs would have to be changed.
Okay, I, again, it was something that we noticed and we just wanted to ask because if that was relatively changed, then it would have, have to have that relatively changed to the secondary plat because the secondary plat conforms to the comments that came in.
No, I think what we have on file here shows the 12th Street and 12th Place as a recommendation by Public Safety.
Understood.
And just for clarification, as Bob noted, it's 112th.
Sorry.
No, 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 just...
You're right. I don't know.
I noted it, Sergio. I'll let Bob Davis know tomorrow.
Thanks, Bob.
Hearing no other questions or comments from Mr. Fleming, is there anything else for the good of the cause?
There's, is there NIPSCO to the lift station yet? Is that service been provided?
Apparently MEAT started there either yesterday or today.
Okay.
So we got all of NIPSCO cleared and then it's just a case of MEAT getting the work done. They're pretty quick. I think they'll be out in 10 to 14 days. They're, they're pretty efficient.
Hearing nothing else, we will see you February 1st.
Very good, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have, for our consideration and recommendation to the town council, is the establishment of a sidewalk and curb and gutter fund. Mr. Decker, if you don't mind, could you sort of brief us on what you have put together here? Just, you would probably do a much better job than I would.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So I've drafted, this is the first draft of the ordinance and I was reviewing it earlier. There's already a few, couple of revisions that I'll need to make before it's finally adopted. But basically, the ordinance is amending the town subdivision control ordinance. And the amendments that are going to be made specifically are to, well, I believe there was a, a small change to the construction standards regarding the, I recall, was it the aggregate base or there was? I don't know if there was a...
They changed it from square feet to linear.
Well, that was, had to do with, that had to do with the payment in lieu of provisions. But primarily, the ordinance is intended to allow the plan commission to make a determination that in certain circumstances where a proposed sidewalk or curbs and gutters really would not be feasible or would not make logical sense for installation to allow the developer to make a payment to a town fund in lieu of construction of those sidewalks or curbs and gutters. And so the determination would ultimately be made by the plan commission on a case-by-case basis. And if this plan commission makes that determination, then the developer would be allowed to basically pay 90% of the total cost as determined by the town engineer of what the cost of installation for those sidewalks or curbs and gutters would be. And I think the intent is that the fund would then be allowed to be used to install sidewalks and curbs and gutters in, in other locations in the town as, as would be determined by the town. So that's, that's the sum and substance of the ordinance.
So Adam, a quick question. We just had Schilling, the, by the shrine, where they didn't technically, didn't have the space to put a sidewalk in. Would they have been a candidate for this or could they have, could they have questions saying there's no space for us to put a sidewalk in? You can't fork, you can't request us to make this in lieu of? Could there be a discussion like that or?
Well, I think what you're suggesting is if it's physically impossible to install a sidewalk because of the location of state right-of-way or, yeah, I, to be honest, I haven't given that thought to be able to really answer that question intelligently or with the research. But I think that the intent, not so much whether it's physically impossible, but if the, in my view, if it's, if a sidewalk is required, I believe in most instances, there could be plans prepared to allow for installation of a sidewalk. I, I think what occurred in the Schilling property, as I recall, is that, you know, that had to do with the intersection of the widening of US Highway 41 at the same time as their plans for the shrine. And so that was a bit unusual, but I would think that the plan commission ultimately would have to consider those facts on a case-by-case basis and ultimately make that determination whether it, it determines it's reasonable to require the developer to make that payment if the sidewalks don't make sense, if it's illogical or impractical for their installation.
What kind of liability would the town get into if the sidewalks are not put in there and something does happen? Are we open for a liability?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
In my opinion, if there's no sidewalk there currently and the plan commission makes a determination that the sidewalk is impractical or illogical, I, I don't, I, I don't foresee any real probability for any legal liability for that decision.
Well, if, if the developer can make adjustments to, to put a sidewalk in because it's safety, for safety reasons, he should adjust his plans to put a sidewalk in there. Isn't that more reasonable than just letting the town decide, well, it's not feasible, so just go ahead and continue allowing them?
I don't make those policy decisions.
No, I, I'm just trying to play the devil's advocate in this case.
And Joe, this, this came about because prior to this board's stance on sidewalks, we were allowing waivers.
Yeah.
Because everyone, their, their excuse was, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, it's a sidewalk to nowhere. And finally, we said, well, if we continue these waivers, we'll never have sidewalks. So discussion has been made, is there other avenues to do that if there's a logical, like there was a subdivision, a neighbor in a subdivision near me, the whole neighborhood had no sidewalks, so he asked for a waiver. That might have been a good one to say, okay, you're not going to put, have to put sidewalks in your neighborhood because no one has it, but there's this fund now that you could use and then the town would have an opportunity to put somewhere, sidewalk somewhere else.
Okay, all right, that's, I think it's logical.
The Schillings was, it was just, you know, they had their parking lot already, the indot came in, expanded 41, and it left a gap where there was, it would not meet our subdivision control ordinance of the width of the sidewalk. So they came in and said, we can't do it. So I just, this, I don't know if we can make force, someone like the shrine to do, I don't, I'm not saying force, but request them to do that, so.
What's the reason of collecting 90% and not 100%?
So the reasoning behind it is essentially to not impose any kind of penalty on the developer. If the cost is determined by the town engineer and the developer ultimately said, well, I, I'll just put it in the sidewalks and the curbs and gutters and even though the plan commission might request that this payment be made in lieu of installation, I think that's basically what the reasoning is, is that there's not a penalty being imposed on the developer for the plan commission's determination to make a payment in lieu of installation of curbs and gutters. The, the number itself is, to be frank, somewhat arbitrary. I know other towns have set that at 80%. I believe Lowell has an ordinance that sets that amount at 80%. I'm not aware of any other towns or cities that have implemented a similar type ordinance. So I think 90% was, in my opinion, probably the best to avoid the appearance of any penalty being imposed for the plan commission's decisions to suggest this payment.
Sergio, in your opinion, I'll say expert opinion as a planner, what do you think about this ordinance?
I think the ordinance is a tool that can be used when necessary. I think the, and the idea or the game from a planning perspective is to install sidewalks, whether there are sidewalks to nowhere, at some point sidewalks will be connected. I've seen too many cases where over 10, 15 years, someone says, there's no necessary need for sidewalk and because the other three corners don't have it and then all of a sudden 10 years later, all three corners went through redevelopment and they all have sidewalks now except for the one that doesn't. I think it should be the mission of the plan commission that stewards the community to order some type of walkway or pathway for pedestrians at ADA compliancy. So I think this, this, there should really be a true hardship where they cannot meet this requirement for sidewalks. I also question, you know, why can't it be 100% if that fund is to go somewhere else if necessary? I'd hate for someone to see it as a opportunity to say, well, instead of installing sidewalks at 100% here, I can do, just contribute the funds at 90% to somewhere else.
So do you think this is a good thing for the town of St. John's?
I think it's a good thing as a tool to be used when necessary.
Okay.
But to really evaluate, are we ready to use this tool?
Well, and I think the way that it's written, I don't think that people will, it's not a choice, right? So they don't have a choice. The, the first thing that we have to do is decide is, is this a situation where installing a sidewalk would be what it's quoted here, illogical or not possible? So is it impossible? Is it illogical? And if the answer to that question is yes, then we move on to, to the, to the, to the fund. So then they have the option to contribute to the fund. But short of that, if the determination is that it is possible, then they're putting sidewalks. Because that's what the ordinance says.
I've seen in this, with this plan commission, I've seen you guys require sidewalks, boardwalks over, over wetlands, you know, you know, even, you know, if necessary. I've seen cases where, you know, the applicant could dedicate the right-of-way for additional sidewalks or install the sidewalks as part of that. So there really has to be some true way that you cannot install sidewalks or make some type of connectivity for pedestrians, so.
And it's going to be tough because most of our development and all the new subdivisions that have gone in within the last 10 years are leading the new ones that already have sidewalks. So they're not going to be able to just try to avoid putting a sidewalk in. And if you notice, Schilling did put a sidewalk in on, on that, by the shrine property.
Yeah, this was out in front of their...
Yes, so, looks like they intend to carry that north.
Yes.
So that's a good thing. I just, with this, if this ordinance gets approved, I just hope it's not a big debate with developers of, no, I don't want to put the sidewalk in and they're looking at just hard numbers. Okay, I can save 10% on 50,000 bucks to put sidewalks in.
Yeah.
I just hope they don't. I, I could see it being a, just a crutch. I, it's a good idea, but then part of me says it's not a good idea.
And to clarify, because Bob, you've been vocal about that, but from my understanding, the only way a developer would pay into this fund is if this plan commission allows for it. Am I correct on that, Adam?
That's correct.
It is not that they can come in, they could ask, I guess they could ask for it, but only we would be, we, the board or this plan commission would have the authority to allow that.
Right, and the, right, and Yolanda alluded to this earlier. The language is that the plan commission may determine that the installation of curbs and gutters or sidewalks is impossible or illogical within the proposed subdivision or amendment or replat of subdivision. So it's not an option for the developer to suggest that. They can make a request and perhaps make an argument as to why they think it might be illogical or impossible, but ultimately, it's the plan commission's decision whether that's the case. And, and so, you know, the, to address Bob's comments, I mean, again, the 90%, it, it could be changed to 95%. I suppose conceivably it could be raised even to 100% if, if that's really what the intent, you know, is to avoid any, you know, possibility that the developer might even, you know, just as a matter of course, in every subdivision be requesting that. I don't think that's going to be the case. I truly believe that in most instances, at least in my experience, my three years here, there will be sidewalks, curbs and gutters installed in accordance with the subdivision control ordinance. It's very infrequent where those issues come in where it's truly impossible or illogical to make those installations.
I think Chairman brought up a point of the neighborhood by you, that it was an infill lot where the neighborhood was already developed out with a open, open swell ditch, no sidewalks, and it was an open lot that was, you know, new, new home construction. I think that, you know, and it's already a lot of record, establishes a lot of record, you know, or going through the, combining lots for whatever the purposes. If it needs to install that, then, you know, how does it fit with the character of the neighborhood? And if not, then can we use those funds to be used at later, for a later project? If the town goes back to that entire neighborhood and says, now we're going to install storm modern infrastructure with sidewalks and curbs and manage that, then at least there's something there available for that. It's just a tool and it depends on how often the, the plan commission wants to exercise that tool.
I like it. I like it a lot. I think it leaves initially, the initial determination is up to us and it would be discretionary. So they would have to come to us and we would have to make that initial determination. So that is our safety guard. We're not just going to say, yeah, pay into the fund because that initial determination of it being not possible or illogical has to be made and that decision is made by us. So it falls with us. It'll, it'll end here. If it's not impossible and if it's not illogical, then they're putting the sidewalks. That's the way I see it. I like it. I've always liked it from the beginning. I thought it was innovative. I thought Sergio and Adam came up with it, so I thought that this, this is really good. I like it.
We've discussed the percentage. Is there any discussion to, I don't think there's any interest in lowering it. Should we consider raising it? And, and the decision doesn't need to be made tonight. Sergio, of my understanding, we would make notice at the February meeting of a public hearing that would happen in March. Then in March, we would have a public hearing regarding this. We would then make a recommendation to the town council who would either accept our recommendation or not.
Correct, that's the process. The only thing we would need to figure out is when we schedule this for public hearing, we'll be meeting the deadline for the newspaper to get that in time. But that's really the only thing that we would have to confirm. But that, you are correct, the next step would be to schedule this for public hearing and, and then make a recommendation to the council.
In the sense, I, I think the idea goes great in that putting the decision on us based on what the developer may come up with, some of the issues that he would like to have. But if the, the commission may, how about if the word should be, instead of strike, this may, should determine that the installation, that gives us that more leeway and strength to basically hold it on the, not may, because then it becomes a lobbyist technique. Well, let's see how many people we could get over under this thing. And that's on page four, five, top, you have the commissioner may determine that the installation of the sidewalk is impossible or logical, which is the right approach, but that may could go into, should be striked and should.
Shall.
Shall, which actually gives us...
Yeah, I disagree.
May, may, go ahead.
I'm going with the two attorneys.
The word may is purposeful in that it's discretionary to the plan commission. If we substituted the word shall, then that's suggesting that the plan commission must do something or must act a certain way. And that's not the intent of the ordinance. So I would disagree, so.
Gives us lead, leadway by having may in it.
So may means like everyone that wants to put a sidewalk in here would have to come to us first to determine if it's reasonable or logical to put a sidewalk in versus only those that are requesting this avenue versus actually installing.
That's...
Am I correct? I'm, I'll leave it at may.
I think, I think, I understand Joe's concern, but if you read the entire sentence, I mean, it gives you context, right? In extraordinary circumstances, the planning commission may determine that the installation of a sidewalk is impossible. So that sentence, that sentence by itself is essentially allowing us the opportunity to decide when there is an impossibility or it is illogical. Am I right about that, Adam? That's the way you wrote it, right?
I agree.
Yeah.
Agreed.
And back to the 90% you said?
We want to take it, I mean...
I'm good with 100%.
I'm good with 100%. Well, I mean, okay, I, I know Bob talked about 100. I, I actually asked, I think the original was 85%. Or what you got from Lowell was, or Cedar Lake was 85.
So I know, I believe Lowell's ordinance currently recovers 80%. But in my opinion, I believe the plan commission could say, we're going to establish that at 100%. And I don't believe there's any legal objection to doing so. I don't think that in, exacts any kind of a penalty on the developer.
All right, something for us to chew on? We still have a, we have the February 1st, we'll have a study session, and then again, we'll have the public hearing if we want to move forward up to February 1st to make announcements, so. I mean, is everyone good with at least the general number so we could at least proceed forward for a February 1st public, okay?
I like 90, honestly. To me, the way I see it is, is sort of like consideration for having to do this. So we, we require as a town that sidewalks be installed. And in lieu of that, if you can't do it, then we'll allow you to contribute into this. So to me, it's a little bit of consideration, hey, we understand your, there's an impossibility here, so contribute into this. And you actually get to contribute slightly less. Like, I like 90 because it's sort of a give or take consideration. That's just me, though.
Yeah, my concern was like going back to the Schillings where they physically only had three feet of land to put a sidewalk in. Could they argue saying, we cannot put it in, so you can't even force us to put into this fund?
Right.
So that's what, so maybe then...
I guess we could. We could have told them, fill in the pond, cut your, cut your parking lot back.
True, that's true.
And, you know, really run them down the gauntlet of, you know, move the signs, you know, yeah, it could have been done, but is it practical?
Here's where we're going to get into a pickle now, thinking about it, not pickle, that's not a very professional word to use.
In this group, it is.
Here's where we're going to get, I think, into a problem, kind of looking ahead. What if the impossibility is created by the developer or if it pre-exists? Or if it pre-existed the developer before us? So, they say, for example, with the Shrine, I think it's a perfect example. I mean, that, that's been there for a long time, right? And there's been changes to the, to Wicker Avenue that perhaps made it impossible. So, is it developer-driven and what stance should we take when these situations happen? That's where I think it'll get a little bit dicey. But I still think that case by case, we hear what they have to say, we take a look at everything and we still revert to this. I like this.
I like a sub-100. I mean, I'd go to 95 if that, if that was a group, but I'm fine with 90. So, that's my personal take on that one, so.
I go with 95.
Mr. President, could I ask a question?
Yes, you can. We're too formal. Just jump on it.
We say pickle, right?
Yeah, we say pickle.
I have a, no, I'm teasing. When, in the past, when you would grant a waiver to someone who sort of fell under the, I have a sidewalk to nowhere, can I get a waiver on building them? You didn't collect any money, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, I think there is a justification that you're not collecting 100% but some amount because you weren't collecting anything before. And so, if you ever allow this again, may, may allow. 90% maybe is, if you want to use the, I hate to use the word fair, but fair to the developer that, hey, my predecessor got away with a waiver, he didn't pay anything. You want me to pay the whole thing and you may or may not build a sidewalk somewhere else or, so 90% kind of shows your, your thinking of them a little bit, just a little bit.
That we care.
That you care a little bit, yeah. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Something's better than nothing.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, like with Sergio's comments about, and this board has been very strong on their stance with sidewalks, right? For the last couple of years, I think we've gotten to the point where developers don't even ask anymore.
Right.
I can't, well, maybe they do and Sergio just tells them, you could try, but don't even think about it. So, I just wanted to make sure this was the right approach and it wasn't hamstringing us or Sergio giving developers a leeway out of putting in the sidewalk. So, as long as Sergio and Adam and you guys are good with it, then okay, that's perfect. Anything else for the good of the cause? If not, we can call it a night. Sergio, Adam?
Nothing.
John? Councilman, anything? Good? All right.